Mr. Gitchin?
Yeah.
Here.
Mr. Richardson? Mr. Sheen?
Yep.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Narko?
Here.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Bahu, has anyone signed up for public appearance?
Mr. Moran, no one has signed up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, school committee communications, are there any school committee communications? I believe no. Uh, report of the student rep, there is no student rep, uh, tonight. One will be appointed by the next meeting. Have the approval of the minutes, uh, from June 12th.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gitchin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Lemay?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Narko? Mr. Moran? Mr. Moran.
Oh, okay, yeah. I forgot who I was. Uh, report of the treasurer, uh, motion to waive the reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gitchin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Narko? Mr. Moran?
Yes. Uh, motion to approve the expenditures of eleven million, five hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gitchin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Report of general counsel, uh, Ms., uh...
Record me as yes.
Is that, Mr. Hogan, is that you?
Yes, I've responded to all votes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so is this, uh, at a later time, or is she here?
Uh, she is not here at the moment, but she will be here, uh, when, uh, Mrs. Martinez and myself discuss...
Okay, so I will hand a me- meeting over to the report of superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on my agenda, I'd like to introduce some of the newest members of our school, of our administrative team to the school committee. So I'd like to ask Jennifer Machado to come forward. Uh, Jennifer is our new director of licensed practical nursing. Jen holds a master's degree in nursing and brings over twenty years of experience as a registered nurse, including fifteen years at Massachusetts General Hospital. In two thousand nine, she began teaching about the day and evening practical nursing programs at Greater Lowell Tech. And by two thousand and fifteen, she also took on the role of admissions coordinator. Now as director, she brings a deep commitment and passion for educating future nurses and advancing the quality of nursing education in our community. So I ask that we all please join me in welcoming Jen to our school community and our administrative team.
Welcome. Welcome. Good luck.
Welcome.
You're a welcome addition to it.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll do a good job.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. So next, I'd like to introduce the new manufacturing, engineering, and technology CTE chairperson, Mr. Robert Maella.
Hello, everybody.
Rob comes to us from Greater Lawrence Technical High School and currently holds a bachelor of science and masters of science in occupational education from Fitchburg State University and a vocational and occupational degree from East Coast Aero Tech. Robert taught automotive technology and most recently held a cooperative education coordinator position at Greater Lawrence Tech. Please join me in welcoming Rob to our leadership team and our school community.
Very much welcome.
Rob, welcome.
Good, yeah.
And the next item on my agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that once again, Greater Lowell Tech is a recipient of the T-Mobile Friday Night Five G Lights, uh, five K winner. And T-Mobile will be here again at this year's homecoming game to present us with that check during halftime. So we're thankful for all of the members of our community who sort of tagged us online in order for us to, uh, receive that five K again this week.
Just to let the committee know, I've been, um, subscribing with T-Mobile for over five years now. So they have a wonderful service. And if anyone ever wants to have a great carrier, choose T-Mobile as yours.
Will you stop that? Well, while we're at it, they got a great internet and it's cheap, all right, stop that. That stuff works for T-Mobile.
See, amen. Terrific, there you go.
The T-Mobile show came tonight, they put a belt really good, but they, they will be joining us in homecoming, during homecoming.
Hopefully they'll have a pink shirt for me.
Yes, you remember that. They came very, uh, well-equipped with swag for us, so we appreciate that. The next item on my agenda, I'd like to inform the committee that we were once again awarded a WEOWA in-school youth services grant uh, from Mass Hire Greater Lowell Board in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, ninety-seven dollars to provide thirty students at risk with support in finding employment in the community.
That's transpired the last couple of years, hasn't Cheryl's been doing...
Yeah, Cheryl's been working with that.
Yeah, beautiful.
We appreciate that. Next, I would like to inform the committee that Greater Lowell Tech has been awarded the Career Technical Initiative Round Ten Grant. Although the original notification letter that is in your packet noted in the amount of six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we were actually awarded eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this, uh, this money in partnership with Mass Hire is to provide training to adult, eighty-six adult participants for electrical welding, plumbing, carpentry, auto tech, and culinary arts. So we thank Cheryl, we appreciate our partners with, our partnership with Mass Hire and the Commonwealth Corporation, and we look forward to providing these services to the adults in our community.
That's amazing. Um, let me just ask, um, is this a one-year grant?
So yes, it is, and this is, I think, the second year that we received this grant.
Wow, does this help with our community and all of the residents that can have the benefit of having a Vo-Tec, um, program in their lives so they can become work-ready?
We're a school that services not only the students on their day, but the community at night with our LPM program, with this program, with our adult, uh, continuing education classes. So hopefully we can continue doing that for the Greater Lowell community.
It's almost like we're becoming a night college.
Yeah.
It's great.
So the next item on my agenda is I'd like to invite Ms. Machado, uh, up again, the director of practical nursing, to join us to provide you with some updates on our LPM, uh, admissions, admissions. So I, in support of my new admin team member, will come and sit down, listen, in case you have questions, so I can support her in discussing this very important matter.
So recently, the board of nursing put a cap on our admissions. Typically, we have a cohort in our day of forty, and then our evening is forty, so we're a total of eighty. Um, recently, in June, they put a cap on our admission to cut it in half. So twenty for our day division and twenty for our evening division. Um, the cap on our admission was placed, um, on us due to the lack of direct patient care for our mental health services, as well as our maternal-child services. We have recently, um, attained both, uh, mental health clinical, um, opportunities for mental health as well as maternity, so we have got those contracts now available.
So can I just, just clarify? So, uh, prior to finding these direct care, uh, patient contracts, the, the, uh, education was given, but it was given using simulation. However, the board of nursing required that we have some more inpatient direct care to provide mental health and paternity in, instead of stimulation. So it was very difficult finding these placements.
We did a, sorry, we did a search for a twenty-five mile radius, and unfortunately, because of the schools in the area, it was saturated. And so we recently got, um, those affiliations, which is wonderful. Um, they want no more than fifty percent of stimulation. And unfortunately, in the maternal child, we were doing a hundred percent stimulation. And so because of that, that's, they, they gave us the warning for the cap in our mission. So we're still approved by the board of admissions, um, in terms of that, but we are put on warning status with full approval. And I put into requests in talking with Carolyn Walsh, who's one of the board members. Um, we recently put in a change of our curriculum. She said she liked that, and moving forward, I'm going to request in December, when I put in another request, to hopefully go back up to increase our cohort to what it was before.
Because we now do have the direct education care for mental health and maternity.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, was there a warning, did we know that this possibly could be coming?
I don't know of that, um, during...
Jen is new to this.
Congratulations again, Jen.
Thank you.
Welcome to the hot...
So she's had to, you know...
To the fire.
Yes.
Help us overcome some, uh, a lot of challenges. So yes, I think, uh, the former director was aware of it, and as Jen said, they were doing searches in the area and trying to acquire those contracts, but it was saturated and we could not, uh, find the contracts. We were lucky that we were able to find one in New Hampshire, and one of our teachers is certified in New Hampshire to be able to use that. And we were able to work with the Department of Corrections to, for the other placement.
For mental health, as well as Lowell General and Emerson. So we've secured three different spots in the hopes of going back up to that admission next year. We will be able to not just have the twenty and twenty, but the forty and forty. So we'll be able to, um, you know, fulfill that for all the students.
We also did go before the board this summer to, and we presented the signed contracts that we had acquired, but it was too late.
It was too, yeah, too late.
So of the eighty students that were accepted, it seems like forty got turned away.
So we did a lottery, and whoever was selected out of the random lottery was deferred to next year's enrollment.
And when did they find out?
They found out...
June.
The day that we did the lottery.
Yeah.
We, we had to act very quickly.
I'm sure.
Once the board put us on board, we had to act within three days, uh, to have the lottery, inform the individuals that they were deferred, and move forward.
So th- this happened in June?
Yes.
So the students were informed in June?
Yes.
Did this happen to any other school in the district that we know of?
And some student, uh, some schools unfortunately were, are closing, yeah. Based on the inability to find mental health and especially maternity clinical placement for the direct patient care.
Are these, some of the, some of these cuts, are these some of the cuts that are going around the whole country?
I don't know about if it's the whole country, but certainly it sounds like within the state of Massachusetts. The, the, these LPM programs are facing these challenges because they're saturated with RN schools. And so we were very lucky to just now go to New Hampshire and being able to, you know, secure that, yeah, partnership with St. Joseph, which is great.
And we have the paperwork that says we, we can do the maternity and the mental health and less simulators. So ultimately, as long as we stay, keep that contract going, then next year, we're hoping to...
Jen's gonna go before the board, I, in December. We're hoping to hear actually that in December, that we can reopen our enrollment to the eighty students. Uh, and we're, you know, we're hopeful.
Sure.
We do have the contracts. She's, we've been working cooperatively with the board of nursing.
We put in the curriculum change to show that we've added mental health. We've showed that we've now taken that, it's now fifty percent for stimulation and maternity, and the other fifty percent, so we're not having any more than that fifty percent for maternal child. Um, the education coordinator for the board of nursing, uh, told me that she actually just sent us an email saying that she liked the report, and she doesn't feel that there'll be any further questions, which was a really good sign that we've established this relationship. And this dialogue of actually by email having, it's, it's actually really a nice partnership that I think that we're forming moving forward. Um, so it really does look like moving forward, we're gonna be able to attain that, to go back up to the forty and forty is, is my hope. And it, and it's looking positive.
Ms. Machado, you seem like you have all your i's dotted and your t's crossed.
I have to say Jen did an incredible job just coming in with that challenge and, uh...
And thank you for informing us. And I just wanna say I'm sorry to the students that got turned away publicly, because I know they were probably looking forward to it, and unfortunately, uh, they seem to be deferred.
We did get the support of the whole Lowell delegation to not, not reduce us. And even with that support and letters to the board, it was not enough.
And the ones selected, these are all full-time positions?
Yes, and they will be deferred until next year, but they're accepted for next year's.
What if something part-time was available? It's gotta be full-time?
We don't have anything available right now. The program is full with the twenty and twenty.
Okay.
And Jill, I have to say, has been wonderful in supporting me to attain this and constantly answering my emails and helping write letters. So thank you for that.
Great work. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
The next item on my agenda is the Cooperative Education Agreement that's in your pocket. If you could take a moment to look at that, and I can talk about some of the changes to that agreement. The overall change is that the Cooperative Student Application Form and the Employee Agreement were really combined into one form, and that was the major change. The rest are very small changes. On page three, students are to report to school on days they are not scheduled to work. That is clearly stated. And on page six, it just says that the changes that were made to this agreement are also reflected in the student handbook. And the Cooperative Education Agreement is terminated when a student graduates. Those were the major changes to the Cooperative Education Agreement. With that said, I'm going to need your approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
I just want to say before we move forward that I know we don't have a Cooperative Education Report in your packet, but I am happy to report that twenty-two percent of the class of twenty-twenty-six will start school on Cooperative Education.
Awesome.
Great news.
The next item on the agenda, I'd like to invite Tracy Impernasio, our Director of School Counseling, to review the changes to our medication administration policy. And just to note that these changes have also been updated in our student handbook.
Hello. So mine is a very quick and simple update to the med administration plan. It literally, it's just an update to the law, so we were required obviously to change our policy to be in compliance. It simply states that when students require medication and they leave the state on a field trip, that they will carry and administer their own medications in compliance with how they've been prescribed. So they'll use them appropriately, they'll carry them appropriately, and they'll administer them themselves. It was also updated on our field trip form, which is as a direct result of the med administration policy. And as Ms. Davis said, it's also in the student handbook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
On page five, under Title E, it says, "The Greater Lowell Technical High School Committee authorizes that the responsibility for the administration of medication may be delegated to the following categories of unlicensed school personnel according to criteria."
Yep, that means not the school nurse. So that if I took a group of students, say, to a college for a college visit, and I was to have their medication, I'm not a licensed medical provider. And so I would need to be listed as someone who was approved to carry and administer. Yes, and I would do training with the nurses. The nurses give trainings on CPR, on EpiPen administration. They go over the medications with anybody. That's part of our field trip policy that any, the roster of students is to be provided to the nurses. And they go through the medication and what it looks like with the dose, they kind of go through it with whoever is taking the students off campus.
So it's saying that we properly authorize you to do that?
So what it's saying, Paul, is that's what's in the policy, and you're approving the policy?
Yes.
You approve the policy, you are approving that.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to come back on me to say I approve this medication.
No, 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 no.
You're approving that, you're approving just what you read.
Yes.
That individuals other than the nurse, under the nurse's supervision, right, are able to go on a field trip and administer medication to students.
Right.
Okay, all right. Okay, you're dismissed.
Thanks.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Getchea thorough review that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
I want you to know I wasn't sleeping.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
So next, I'd like to ask Mrs. Martinez to join us to present changes to the acceptable use policy, which is also included, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. This is for, yes, the student acceptable use policy, which is also included in the student handbook.
Hello, how are you today?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Everybody's had a good summer. So we changed the student acceptable use policy, and it's very similar to the current acceptable use policy also for staff. So some of the changes that were done in key summary would be the purpose of the AUP. So the actual Department of Education as well as the Governor's Office actually designated new, actually, new points and new AUP policy. So we took that and incorporated it into our current policy. So I just want to go over the purpose. The AUP ensures students use Greater Lowell Tech's digital resources responsibly, ethically, and legally to support learning, protect sensitive data, and maintain a safe school environment. And that technology use is a privilege and not a right. So we revamped some of the technology guidelines, again, using the documentation that we received from the state of Massachusetts. So also sort of added new social media expectations as well as academic integrity, device and network use throughout the district, security and passwords, just making sure those passwords are being kept private, secure. And also consequences for any violations. And then the parent guardian responsibilities of the AUP and key laws that are referenced, such as FERPA, the FOIA, and SIPA. So then the student agreement, it's located for the students to sign as well as the parents. So if.
And that sign-off is in the back of the handbook.
The student handbook, yes.
In reference to students' passwords, do the students make their own password? Or they assigned a password? Is it something?
Yes, they create their own passwords, and they're required to change them periodically. So we give them a password, and then they change that password.
They change it, and then it's updated annually or a few times?
After a certain few times.
School year?
Yes.
Got you. And it's sort of like the double authentication? They get some type of message to their phone?
It goes through our, you know, making sure that it's going through our network and it's protected with our firewall and so forth.
Great. Thank you for the update.
So we also need approval?
Motion to approve.
Sure.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
So at this time, I'm gonna ask Lisa to remain. I'm going to go to that end of the table again so we can speak to you and give you an update on our admissions policy. And I'd also like to introduce Attorney Jennifer McGrew, who is with us from Mercy Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lahane, and here tonight to support Lisa and I and answer any of your questions in regards to any legalities to the new updates to admissions. Okay?
Okay.
Move on down.
Okay. So on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted to change both the processes by which middle school students become aware of career technical education, CTE, and admissions processes at CTE schools and vocational schools as well as vocational programs. And so, so beginning with the two thousand.
Can you leave for the slide?
Sure, so, sure. So let me put that up first. Do you want to put the slide up first? We can do that. Okay. So from the beginning with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six admission cycle for students entering in the fall of two thousand twenty-six, where there are more applicants than available seats, students shall be accepted for admission by a lottery conducted by our school. All lotteries for career tech education or programs, seats shall be conducted in a public place and with reasonable public notice given at least one week prior to the lottery. Such lotteries may be conducted electronically, provided that the methods must be shared publicly, and the process must be fair, and the selection must be random. So there are two choices with this new regulation. We're either allowed to implement a blind lottery or a weighted lottery. But there's a piece that's for student awareness, and that's a qualifier that actually can be used both in the blind lottery as well as in a weighted lottery. So up here on the slide, we actually have what the criteria is to have for student awareness. So if we choose to use the student awareness as a qualifier, the CTE school must hold at least two in-person information sessions and at least two virtual information sessions. And then the actual student applicants, in order to be entered into the, either the blind lottery or the weighted lottery, they must demonstrate awareness by one of the following: either attending an open house or information session in person or virtual, by participating in a CTE school program or tour, or completing a video module created by CTE or approved by DESI. So that is the student responsibility. So.
So I guess if they attend an open house, someone will be signing that they attended the open house? Is that how that works?
We would have to collect that data.
Yes.
Is that something we're capable of doing at the open house? Sounds like it's pretty cumbersome to me.
We will have to be, we will have to do that.
We will have to do that if we choose.
If we choose to use student awareness as a qualifier.
Okay, so we're gonna go on this before.
So student awareness could be a qualifier for either the lottery or the blind lottery. It's something that we do not have to use if we don't choose to use it.
Okay.
As a qualifier. What I mean as qualifier is if we decide to use student awareness and a student does not demonstrate one of the following, they do not even get put into the lottery.
Sure.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. All right. See if I can. So, let me see if we can. Okay. So if we choose to use criteria and we do not meet DESI's comparison index standards, that there is not disproportionality for special programs, then the criteria shall be approved annually by the School Board of Trustees, or the school committee in this case. The Superintendent of our school, that would be Jill, would submit an annual attestation to the department that the admissions policy of the complies with federal and state law, including laws addressing discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, or disability. So we will be looking at that. And the department would be able to take what they deem as necessary action to address where the admissions policy and practices, if we choose to use any of the criteria for the CTE, if they do not comply with applicable state and federal laws and regulations and order compliance actions, including revisions to or replacement of existing admissions policies. Meaning they can put interventions in place that may include a requirement that we do not use any criteria at all. So.
Can you simplify that?
Yeah, so I can simplify that. We would basically be using the same criteria that we currently have in place for meeting that standard. So that would continue.
Okay, so I'm gonna break it down a little bit more. So to simplify the piece on criteria. So if we choose to use criteria, and I think we should explain each individual criteria. You don't have to use them all. You could use one, you can use two, you could use three criteria. But if we choose to use criteria, I will have to sign an attestation form like Lisa said. And if our data reflects that the criteria has a negative impact on our data, then we could be forced to be a full blind lottery.
Forced by whom?
Forced by.
The Department.
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, because these.
Because this is where this is all coming from, right? Through the governors.
Yes, exactly. It's a regulation. So the criteria, if we were going to use selected criteria, you could use all three, or one, or none. And that would be a blind lottery. So the first criteria is attendance. So any student applicant with fewer than twenty-seven unexcused full-day absences two-hundred-and-seventy days prior to the application date after grade seven would get an extra ticket into the lottery.
That's shameful.
So the student discipline piece, students who have not been suspended or expelled pursuant to, excuse me, thirty-seven H or thirty-seven H and a half, two-hundred-and-seventy days prior to application date after grade seven would also be given an additional ticket to the lottery. And the last, the student interest, and it's not evaluated. They just have to submit an interview, an audio, a video submission, a personal essay, a letter of recommendation from a non-family member, or other measure approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So these are the three, these are the three criteria that we have a choice of using, one or all. One, two, or all. Any questions about the weighted criteria issue?
Yes.
So of the two-hundred-and-seventy days, we're looking at students after grade seven. So when students are accepted currently at Greater Lowell Tech, we include their grade seven, second, third, third and fourth quarters?
We, yes.
Does that mean this lottery says we will not be including the third and fourth quarters of their seventh grade?
So it depends when we open the application window. Okay, so it's.
So we open the application window January one?
Okay, we're required to have the application window open by November one.
Oh, November one.
That's the requirement.
So we can still use part of their grade seven?
Yes, we'll be using all of, mostly probably all of grade seven and partial of eight. So currently, in our admissions policy, we use all of grade seven and term one and two of grade eight.
And of the twenty-seven excused absences, that's a combination of grade seven and grade.
It says unexcused.
And it's unexcused.
Unexcused.
Yes, that's a combination.
Twenty-seven unexcused combination.
For the two-hundred-and-seventy days prior.
We're doing it on November one, that's about two-hundred-and-seventy days in the beginning of that year. January, so it starts essentially the second half of their seventh grade and goes into.
It would probably be all of their seventh grade and some of their eighth grade.
And it's twenty-seven between all of those?
Yes, unexcused. That doesn't count any of the excused absences, just the unexcused.
I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but does that mean these consequences, if they're not, what are the consequences if these aren't followed, or we don't accept them?
Basically, maybe I'll turn that over to the attorney. Thank you.
So if they're not accepted, then you can lose your funding and lose all support provided by DESI because with the new mandate, it's either weighted lottery or blind lottery. And it's one or the other. And if you decide not to do it, DESI can then say that you're not in compliance. They can pull funding, they can pull support, they can do a number of things that make it so that you're no longer able to operate.
So basically, as a governing board, you still have the decision-making to choose either being a weighted lottery or a blind. So basically, as a governing board, you still have the decision-making to choose either being a weighted lottery or a blind lottery.
What is your suggestion?
But you.
So, so the blind lottery, just so we can go over what the blind lottery consists of is. Every student would have to be promoted to the grade they're applying for. So that's the, that, that's the piece. And they would complete and submit an application. And then it would just be a public random drawing. It could be electronic drawing as long as it's public. And transparent process that we announce at least one weeks prior.
So let me just add Lisa to that. So that would be the blind lottery. However, if we chose to use awareness as a qualifier, they would need to demonstrate one. One of those awareness suggestions in order to even be placed into the lottery.
Which was on the first page of the slide.
Yeah, into the blind lottery.
Could we go back to that page just for a second? So it was the, essentially the bottom four.
Yes.
Any one of those four, come to an open house, get something signed off. And it says you were here. Go into some video.
Go to a tour.
Video module.
Attend a tour.
Sure, and then sign off, put their email in, their address, that they have done their criteria to be.
That's a qualifier, yes.
And we would be required to do at least two in-person information sessions as well as two virtual.
We have to do the following on top.
Yes.
We're required, for this qualifier to, to be a qualifier, both parties have responsibilities. As a school district, we have the responsibility of two in-person information sessions and two virtual information sessions. And the student applicant has the responsibility of following through with one of those listed below.
Sure, so we have open houses. We allow all the schools to come in, they visit, that means they've worked and they've been here.
We have tours, that's another way they can demonstrate it, yes.
And if one school system chooses not to send their students here for a in-person information session or anything like that. Then it would be up to the student to get here or go into the virtual.
Just, I just want to clarify that with this new admissions update, there's more responsibility put on the middle school, sending school communities and the middle schools. That they will have to submit a plan to the, to DESI. In regards of how they're going to ensure that information regarding career technical education programs are provided to their students. So they have to, that's their piece of the responsibility.
So if they choose not to do anything, then they are non-compliant.
Correct.
But now they have to go ahead and be a part of the active, activity of what it is to attend a vocational school.
If we choose to use a qualifier. And, and again, a qualifier could be used, or an indicator as they say, can be used for either a blind lottery or a weighted lottery. Can you go back to the weighted lottery screen?
Sure.
So, so I, I guess. Mr. Warren asked what I am recommending. So I would say using what is allowable right now. Because I believe that the criteria of attendance, discipline, and interest is critical here. At Great Lowell Technical High School, to be able to maintain the high expectations and standards. That we currently have and to safely provide an education to, a career technical education to our students. So at this time, I, I think I would recommend using all that is allowable. In order to continue to maintain the quality. Career technical education that we do have. Because we are preparing students for competitive employment or college when they leave. And I believe that attendance is critical. You have to be here to learn. Technical education is very difficult to replicate in tutor at home if a student isn't here. Student discipline, again, we have, in order to create a safe environment here. I think student discipline is critical. We have machinery and tools that are used that I believe students need to be able to use safely. And last, of course, interest is important. We want students here that are interested in obtaining a vocational education. Because of the limited capacity of seating, I think all three are, are necessary. That's my.
Yes. I think that everybody in this building has done, in the past, going forward, they do an amazing job to make Great Lowell Tech the shining star on the hill. You know, you have kids in seventh and eighth grade that either want to be, grow up to be a plumber, a carpenter, whatever, chef. Work hard to get good grades, almost perfect attendance, and now the state's gonna tell us that you can allow a kid to have twenty-seven absences. And they're gonna get an equal shot at a kid that's had five or fewer absences. It makes no sense to me.
Nope.
And I don't want to come off angry or heated, but the governor and DESI, they don't know what they're talking about. Like this is a shame. This is an absolute shame that the governor and DESI are putting you ladies and everybody in this building into a corner.
Every superintendent in the Commonwealth, in the Commonwealth.
There's no way that I'm gonna vote for this when it comes up. I'm not supporting this. Because, you know, I came here in nineteen ninety-four when it was a lottery. They called it the joke. You know, that we're gonna go back to that. And that's an absolute shame. It's an absolute shame of what everybody put in, the blood, sweat, tears they put into this building. As you said, you know, to, Great Lowell Tech, it's, you know, it's the shining star on the hill. I can't say that enough. I mean, I came in here not knowing what I was doing. Mr. Warren was my culinary arts teacher. I had a successful career in culinary arts for over twenty years. And I attribute that to him, to everybody in here. And you're gonna give a kid the equal shot that wants nothing to do with anything. That a kid wants to be, his lifelong goal is to be in the trade, and I just think that's so wrong. It's absolutely wrong. Great law firm, we're gonna make you work, while, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the majority of the board feels. But I think that we should tell the governor, thanks but no thanks. She has absolutely, positively no idea what she's talking about. And neither does DESI. You have members on the board of DESI that have never sat in a classroom before. They're just suits.
So I think, Committee Man, Sheen, I think that we had over two years to communicate this. And through significant advocacy through MAVA and through parents and, and industry representatives. We, we tried to, you, you know, we tried to state our, our case. And we, DESI superseded. So I, I think now, I think now we need to focus on, you, you know, how we want to move forward. I think losing our funding is something that I do not want. I think we need to put our, move forward and continue to do the great things that we do here. And, and, and begin this process as a weighted lottery, using what is allowable that reflects. Sort of what we are current doing, we are doing in our, using in our current policy. But reflects some of the criteria that we find valuable for career technical education. Like attendance, like discipline, like interest. But the real answer here is really out of our hands, is that vocational, that every student should have a choice for vocational education. But there are just not enough seats. So hopefully, and I know that the governor has provided some real, significant amounts of money. For pathway programs and for new vocational schools. The real answer is building our programs, expanding our seats. But that's, that's not up to us right now. Right now, our choice is either we go with a weighted lottery and a blind lottery. And I'm not asking you to make any decisions at this moment. We just wanted to present this to you. We will be developing a revised admissions policy, which will, we will need to present at the next school committee meeting. Because it must be submitted to DESI by, by October first. So hopefully, the board will support myself and, and Lisa and the school community in moving forward. And continuing to do the great job that we do based on the conditions of a weighted lottery and move forward.
Well, I'm gonna propose that we go in executive session before the next meeting. That's what I'm gonna do. We're between a rock and a hard place, just like you are. And I'm not happy at what's transpired from the governor. There's a lot of other places doing the same thing, but your hand, our hands are tied behind our back. You either do or you don't. There's not, there's no, there's no leeway, basically.
At this point, Committee Man LeMay, I, I think you're, you're saying it right. I, I mean, it's unfortunate that we're in.
I don't want to put you on the spot either because I know it's a delicate balance for you.
Lisa, myself, and many of the CTE superintendents across the state over the last year have, have advocated. And really worked hard to try to.
You, you're telling me.
Continue to do what we're doing and to make, make the people and the governor aware that the issue is seats. The issue is that we need more seats for, for our current programs. So with that said, you know, I think putting our energy into looking at a weighted lottery, a blind lottery. And trying to move fo, forward, holding up the expectations that we hold currently with our attendance policies here at school. I mean, the proof is in the data. We do have a ninety-five percent attendance rate. And I'm confident that we can continue holding high expectations.
And we're also the most diverse school in the Commonwealth.
Yes, we are a very diverse school.
I think we're the most diverse.
I, I can't, I'm, I'm not gonna speak to that because I don't have the data here in front of me. But I think we're.
Based on my knowledge.
I think we're a diverse school. I, I agree. I would say we're a diverse school. But I think we need to, to try to focus on what's in front of us.
I understand. It's a, it's a very delicate balance, but I mean, it upsets, it upsets me to no end on this subject matter.
Right, it does, but it would upset me more if we were to lose funding or lose.
Of course.
Some su, support.
But it's either or. There, there's no, there's, there's no leeway here. This is what the, the governor is putting on every, everybody.
It's not my intention for this, you know, for us to lose funding at all. Just for a point of clarification. So DESI wants us to change our admissions policy. Is this a state law or is this something that DESI voted on and said, here, this is a new policy we want you to adopt?
No, it's a regulation. So it's, it's pretty much written in stone in the sense that it's not just a mere suggestion. I can say that.
It's coming from the governor's office.
One thing that, so my background is I'm a former teacher. I taught eighth and ninth grade in Boston Public Schools for about five years before I went to law school. Based on my work with Jill, I know that there's been a very, very strong community that's been built and expectations that's been built at the school. I think one thing about kids is that they are, they can be leaders, but they do what they see as being done around them. So for instance, for a kid who might not have been actively going to school. If they get into the environment where the expectation is to show up to school. And they're around people who have that expectation of them, then more often than not, they are able to exceed that expectation. And I've seen that nine times out of ten happening. If you have a kid who wants to be on the basketball team and the coach says, listen, you can't miss more than X days of school. And they want to be on the team, they will find a way to make it to school every day. So I think that the, the threshold for the number of days is a bit high. But you have to realize that's unexcused absences. There, you might still get students who have twenty-seven excused absences. Because they were able to get doctor's notes or a variety of different things turned in. But I think, as Jill said, being able to use the weighted lottery so that you have some controls over. Kind of the focus that you want to look at when you are looking for the admissions. I think that that's something that you have in your power. And again, it's something that you get to revamp and vote on every year. So if you come to this time next year and you say, hey, the, I guess two years from now, because it wouldn't start till twenty twenty-six. And you say, hey, this weighted lottery isn't exactly what we wanted. Or we don't think that X criteria is as pressing of a need as possible, as, as we think it is, then you can remove it. Or you say, hey, we want to go to the blind lottery and see how that works, you're able to do that. And so you do have some, I'd say flexibility within the bounds of what's provided for you to be able to, to choose.
Thank you for that. I think that was an important point, the flexibility.
Yeah, this, this is, this is a very important matter, I think, involves, should involve the full board at a, at a meeting. Whether it's regular or.
Mr. LeMay, I couldn't agree with you more. And may I suggest, on behalf of this second emotion of the committee as a whole, prior to the next meeting, to thoroughly trash this out.
Well, it should be executive session. I, I don't have a problem making a motion, but.
What is it to thoroughly what? I, I can't hear that.
Hash this out.
Yeah, discuss this.
Just, just to, to air out. We need a, we need a conversation.
That's fine. Executive session is perfectly fine.
Yes.
And I knew, and I knew this was somewhat coming. I didn't want to put the sup, I didn't want to do anything on my own. I know a lot of people down, downtown, so to speak.
So, so I think just to be clear, Mr. LeMay, that like I said, myself, Lisa, and every sup, CTE superintendent in the state over the last year and a half.
Yeah.
We have, we have advocated, I know the local state representatives here in Lowell have been very, very supportive.
Yeah.
They have, I have reached out to them, they have written letters, they have sent letters to the board, and they were very supportive. It's unfortunate that this is, this is where we are. And like I said, I think we just need to move forward, look at what's in front of us and, and.
Well, we want to move forward and be in unison as best as we can. But this board, and many of us have been here a long time, we have, we have achieved what we have achieved today. And now we have to dismantle some things and change things. And we don't have any options. Again, our hands are tied behind our backs. And I'm not a happy camper about it.
I understand, I understand.
I'm not a happy camper about it. So at the very least, I would be calling for, putting in a motion that we have an executive session talk on this. Some point soon before you need the ne, the necessary vote.
That's fine. I think, I think as a committee as a whole, we need to go ahead and have that discussion. So that we can, so that we can choose what's best for not only ourselves, for our school, for our students.
We want everyone on the same page like we have been, right?
Ah, you're good.
And we need everything out on the table and people have to speak their minds, and I think that's the time and place to do it.
Sure, and we need to support the superintendent and we need to support vocational education as well as.
That's the bottom line.
Supporting our funding so that we can go ahead and give the students the best.
I agree, it's just.
Take and have. Listen, listen, the state has grossly misinterpreted this in the sense that there's been a waiting list in Volk schools across the state. For years, as many as ten. Currently, the waiting list is over five thousand students across the state. It's a problem. They don't have enough seats. They don't know what to do. Ultimately, even if we go to a weighted lottery or a blind lottery or any lottery, there's still gonna be a waiting list of five thousand students.
It's a shift.
It is what it is.
It's really you're just shifting the problem and not really solving the problem.
So the state.
It's unfortunate that that's where we are.
Yeah. So this, so the state does have the programs.
We've been facing this problem for years here.
Sure they have. Sure we have. And it's very upsetting for us. And it's very upsetting for us because we would love to have every student.
We could put five hundred more classrooms. Two years from now, we'll need another five hundred.
We don't have enough square footage. So the state says you can't even build on if you want to build on. Anyway, the state has grossly dropped the ball. Unfortunately, this is what they're telling us to do. And sure, we can have an executive session, session to discuss this matter and try to find the best solution for all of us.
That's all I would.
Also, Mr. Bahu, if we don't do what they are asking us to do.
Well, they're not asking you, they're telling you.
Well, if they're telling us to do, we'll lose funding.
Yeah, oh yeah. The alternative is most unfortunate. We're between a rock and a hard place. We gotta put our minds and head, hands and heads together and, and come up with some type of plan. That we can all live with and work with.
So is there anything else to the presentation or, that's all we're gonna discuss this at the next school committee meeting? And have an executive session prior to that meeting.
And we would, Lisa and I, at the next school committee meeting, we would be presenting our recommendation for an admissions policy. After maybe executives, after your executive session, we would present and you could decide on if you're gonna support us and vote yes or no.
And you're both welcome to join our executive session. And of course, it would be great if we had Ms. McGraw in attendance as well. McGrew, excuse me.
Thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. And, you know, I, you can see that.
It's a delicate balance. We understa, we understand.
Everybody at the table is passionate about this, and I just think, you know, it's an unfortunate situation that these ladies and this entire building and this board is forced into. Like shame on the government.
It's the most unfortunate thing that I've. The most unfortunate thing that I've been on ten over ten years. That we have to deal with. But I wanna deal with, I wanna deal with it with everyone with the knowledge of what's going on and, you know, have we wanna still do what's best for the school and for you people.
For the school and the community.
That's that's a that's the most important thing.
Our partners as well.
So let's schedule an ex- executive session for one hour before the school committee meeting. Is that okay with you, Mr. Lemay? So you can have one hour to go ahead and discuss it. And then we'll go into our regular school committee meeting and listen to superintendent.
And come to a final decision.
What's the date of the next meeting, you know?
Sure. The third Thursday of the month of September.
Did you wanna get the date?
Yeah, we can get the date.
Somebody, go ahead. Who's somebody speaking?
Someone's speaking, I'm sorry.
That's right. Do we even?
September eighteen.
Policy in place yet as as the admission, has Lisa and yourself come up with the team to have a policy in place for us to vote? On a weighted lottery, anything like that?
So, uh say that again, Lee, I'm sorry. I'm I'm getting closer. I was down at the other end. Can you repeat that for me?
I I know the, I know Lisa's working hard on this and I know you are too. We don't have anything in place right now to vote on.
No, no, tonight was not a vote. Tonight was just to present the updates and to begin the conversation prior to the development of any policy, which would basically include making a choice between a blind lottery and a weighted lottery.
And you'll be coming up with a policy, recommended policy, next school committee.
I understand you're giving us an update, but we don't have anything in concrete that you guys want us to vote on yet.
No, no, no. We wa- I I wouldn't do that. I thought this would be important to have a public discussion. Before we, and we have an idea of, you have an idea of what we were thinking uh and what we feel would be important, sort of uh mirrors what we, what's in our current admissions policy. While still allowing us to reflect some of the criteria that we feel is important for students to have that attend a career technical uh school, like attendance. Again, as I said, we're preparing students for competitive employment. So you have to be here to learn. Attendance is critical. What we do in our technical programs cannot be done at home. Students have to be here. And also for our employers. Employers want students that want to come to work, so attendance is critical. As well as 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 behavior. We, in many, many of our programs, we have very, very dangerous equipment and and machines. So students have to be responsible to to operate and use that equipment. Just like as if they were to go go out to the workplace. Their employers want someone that's going to be able to do the job and get the job done and be able to use the tools safely and appropriately. So so some of those uh weighted criteria are important to us uh important to us. And by using some of those weighted criteria, I feel like we can still keep up some of some of the expectations and standards that we currently hold. Does that make sense, Mr. Gitchia?
No, no, I absolutely agree with you. They need to be in school to be taught. Lowell Lowell has that problem. We don't. Um let me ask the attorney one question. Can we hit Desi with an injunction, say we don't agree with them? I understand the funding fees. I kinda laugh at the funding fees. Like, I I don't foresee Desi withholding funding from majority or minority school because we can just beat them up saying, you know, like, I don't see that happening. But that, that's fine. Can we hit them with an injunction, say we don't wanna do a weighted or a blind lottery and we want our procedure, which obviously is working. Um it's it's a majority or minority school. Um so we we know that. We have the data proving that. Could we hit them with an injunction?
Uh I mean, I think that that's something that we could think of further down the line because uh this policy wouldn't go in place until twenty twenty-six. So we do have a a year to be able to continue to advocate for a change to the regulations. Um or more flexibility in the regulations. I think the best way moving forward is to have some policy in place that is within the bounds of the regulations. And then continuing to push for the change um just so that you have that airtight backup plan there, so that that's not something else that they can kind of poke at you for. But you have everything in place that you need um while also pushing for the changes to be made to the policy.
Did you hear that?
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Moran, um I'm not sure that we need a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Um I I I agree with uh, well, Curtis and Lee. Um I would ask that at our next meeting, that there is a poster that I saw a week or two ago in the first floor meeting area that uh goes over last year's percentile of attendance. It speaks volumes for the work being done by the faculty and the staff at the school. And there's no way that you're gonna continue with those statistics if you go to this wide open lottery. Because employers want attendance. They want people producing and working. Allowing the percentile of uh absences is through grade school only encourages nonparticipation, either in schoolwork or future employment. The numbers on that board, on an average, is like ninety-five percent attendance monthly.
So so I think, Mr. Hogan, I think you're making, I think it's a great point that you're making. Uh but as, yeah, I think it's a great point that you're making. However, uh I am at a place that don't want to lose funding. I think what uh Attorney McGrew said that uh we we solidify something and then work towards continuing to advocate for change so that we we don't lose funding. And I think at the same time, we we continue as a school community to hold those high expectations and uh support students to be able to achieve the attendance that we are requiring. I mean, I think that's what's happening now. We have some great supports. We have an attendance monitor. We have a credit recovery program. And and we have school counselors that support students. So we have many, many supports in place along with a strict attendance policy that allows students to to adhere to the policy. Uh another thing is is that these students coming, we also have something that they have not been exposed to before. We have twenty-three technical programs that are, that offer hands-on learning experiences that that excite students and that uh maybe uh maybe give them a different perspective about teaching and learning. And that that sort of drive them to want to be here because of that opportunity. So uh as I as I am disappointed.
Demand for those services is far exceeds the supply you can provide.
Double the size of the school.
Yeah.
We we know that. That's a given.
But I think that the issue is i- is seats and it's unfortunate there's, that there is not enough seats. And you know, as I said before, the lottery just shifts around who's in the seats and who's not in the seats. Uh but I think it's up to us as a school community to continue to to build that school community that is welcoming, accepting, supportive. And where students are achieving and and meeting with success. So I guess maybe I'm trying to, I'm trying to be positive.
Ultimately, ultimately, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Lemay to go into executive session at least one hour uh prior to our next meeting. If you'd like to make it longer than that, you're welcome to. Um but the um I will be happy to go ahead and second that motion. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Mr. More- uh Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sure. September eighteenth, I believe.
So can I just clarify with the with the attorney?
Of course.
Can we go into executive session? Cuz I'm not sure we can cuz this is a public topic.
We can discuss it as a school committee. We're welcome because because ultimately, we're going to come into the school committee meeting and then have an open conversation about it. But we're just trying to air out.
I think we have a policy subcommittee that can discuss it. And then bring it to the school committee.
Very good policy.
I think you can have uh the subcommittee who can then present it to the larger board.
I I I mean, I.
So I think that we should, uh you know, just to be on the level, uh move this to a, let's have a policy subcommittee before.
Meeting.
The school committee meeting. And obviously, as everybody knows in the rules and regulations that, you know, um everybody's welcome to join. Uh but you know, the members of the uh subcommittee are the ones that discuss uh what's on the uh subcommittee agenda.
And and we can have this on a meeting prior, on a date prior to the school committee meeting.
Meeting on any.
It doesn't have to be the eighteenth.
Needs to be posted in public.
That's fine.
Yeah, I say we do it just before the meeting, an hour before the meeting. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, policy subcommittee meeting. Who's on the policy subcommittee?
I think I'm on the policy. I'm not sure.
Sure, let's find out.
Mr. Chairman, don't you think that this is important enough to have a sub- subcommittee of the whole to discuss this?
You can attend.
That's what we're trying to come up with.
It doesn't matter who's on it. We can figure that out after. It's just.
We have it right here.
There you go. And everybody's welcome to attend.
Yeah, we'll all be, we'll all be notified that there's a policy subcommittee meeting.
Pro- the problem I have is, as usual, more than likely, someone from the media will be here. It's gonna be.
There's someone from the media that's welcome.
Why?
I don't, I why?
Am I?
I I don't, who cares the media? They're gonna say what you gotta say and that's it.
Oh, I am the, I am the.
I don't care if they say what I.
Trust me, I'm not worried about the news media. It's what they put in and you can't correct. Been around newspapers long enough.
Curtis, five people read the law, son. Who cares?
Okay, so policy subcommittee meeting.
The rest of them are red doomed. I mean, I wouldn't even put it in a canary's friggin' cage.
Okay, Mr. Moran, so we're gonna have a policy subcommittee meeting. Um and we'll schedule that.
In the next couple of weeks?
Sure, for sure, yes.
So that it's before the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Gotta be before that date, right?
Yes.
Will that work for everybody? It works for me.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go to the next item on the agenda, if we could, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McGrew.
I just wanted to say hi to the attorney.
Sorry if we raised our voice a little.
Oh, listen, I work with eighth and ninth graders, so nothing in this world phases me.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to say hi. Thanks for having me. Lisa, could I speak to you for a second?
Paul, Mr. Chairman, we're still in the meeting.
Okay, I know.
Thank you.
So lastly, the next, last item on my my I, my agenda is uh changes to the student handbook. And I'd like to invite uh Mr. Haas here up to review some of the changes to the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six student. Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Um a lot of the adjustments to the handbook this year were primarily housekeeping, uh making some changes to dates from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year up to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um there were some adjustments that were previously discussed uh by Ms. Martinez, Ms. Encarnatio, related to the acceptable use policy as well as the medication administration policy. Um some other items that were updated, uh again, primarily housekeeping. We made revisions to the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Language, the Coplik Certificate of Mastery Language, and that's responsive to the Department of Education's revised guidance. Um we also included in there, um one of our benchmark assessments in the assessment section, which is the Renaissance Star Reading in Math, which we've been using for the last several years for our incoming student placement testing. And we've rolled that into grades nine through twelve. So that we're able to kind of have a continuous record of how students are growing, um both in their literacy skills as well as their math achievement. Um but I'm happy to take any questions related to handbook changes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir.
While Mr. Haas is up here, I'd just like to thank him. This week, uh we had our uh new teacher orientation, which uh Mr. Haas is responsible for planning and implementing. And everything went well with our new teachers. We also had uh our uh freshman orientation. So thank you to Mrs. Encarnatio for a great uh two days of freshman orientation. And uh I'd like to say I'd like to look forward to a another great school year for the twenty-five, twenty-six year uh beginning on Monday, when our teachers return.
And thank you for all you do, Ms. Superintendent, as well as that wonderful staff that you have that works in unison with you.
Thank you. And I do have some, one more thing to announce, which came a- about this week. Uh it was it just got released from being embargoed. I'm unhappy to report that we are going to be able to launch our new veterinary science program. So which is excellent. So that, so all of our incoming class, uh freshman class will go through that exploratory. And that will be a choice, a a new career technical uh program choice for uh incoming freshmen this school year. So with that said, I just wanna thank a couple of people because uh this was a very, very big project. And when you all get a chance, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting sometime uh in the fall, maybe in the next couple of weeks. But I'd just like to thank uh some of the members of our school community, community who were instrumental in making this happen. So Valerie Franco, our Allied Health and Communication CTE chairperson, Mr. Haas, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Gitchia, Director of Plant Services and his entire maintenance team, Mr. Marash, Brad Taylor, Mike Riley, and Mike Lindsey Junior, Lisa Martinez, our Director of Technology Enrollment and Information, members of our construction cluster, uh carpentry instructors, Mr. Mark Lemay, our CTE Construction Chair, carpentry instructors, Pat Coolard and Bruce Brown and their students, plumbing instructor Jared Flood and his students, electrical instructors Eric Weed and Eric Sainte-Lay and their students, P and D instructor Mike Donahue and his students, and Macey instructor Bill Piper and his students. Their collaboration and hard work from this, from program design to planning to the facilities development, all in a very short amount of time uh was instrumental in getting this new innovative innovative program approved. So I can't say enough to thank them all. And I'm excited for our students to have this opportunity. So thank you all. And with that said, again, look forward to another great school year. Thank you all for your support.
Not a problem.
Report of the business manager.
All right, first item on my agenda tonight is just a single line item transfer from the Science Department. Uh upon the beginning of the school year, they reviewed their texts and media uh in the department and determined that they were in good shape and would like to use the money for supplies as they took over a couple of new classrooms in some shuffling around of building space this summer and had uh need for additional supplies to outfit those rooms.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Mr. Hogan? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
All right, and the second item on my agenda is uh a look to have a motion to move five hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars in excess, Chapter seventy-one, transportation reimbursement.
in excess chapter seventy-one transportation reimbursement received last year into the transportation reimbursement revolving account that was established in twenty twenty-one. Uh, this helps to offset the assessment to our member communities , um, in the next budget cycle for next year. Um, and particularly where we're going into a negotiation year or a rebid year for our contract, I think having the excess funding, uh, to offset some of that increase that's likely to come from a new contract to the member community should be, uh, well-received and a prudent use of the funding.
Would you have the current balance of that?
Uh, we had seven hundred and seventy thousand and some change in there last school year, um, in excess reimbursement, but that's being used this year, so it'll be back to zero. Um, and then this will make the balance to the five sixty-one, one twenty-five, which then we'll use in the next school year following. Uh, so this fund, you can't really build a balance. It has to be used in the year following the move. And so, um, it's money in, money out, year to year.
I understand. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Gitchia?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?